We are live.
We are, okay. We are live. It should be under there, with batteries and stuff.
Did you email me?
No, I didn't.
I was just, and I was sitting in there and I thought the same thing.
Yes, yes, at your desk. Um, those batteries were...
I think that's amazing, he already had phase one sewn.
Oh, yeah.
It's gone.
Someone stole it there.
I never saw it in here.
Now, now what is it? Or like the, are the footers in?
How's that? Oh, this here?
Already up. I gotta, I gotta go in there. I gotta see.
Take the drive out. I wouldn't go tonight.
No, well...
It's supposed to rain tonight.
Yeah, supposed to rain. Supposed to have thunderstorms, wind, hail.
Wait a minute, Brian couldn't make it, right?
The what? Is it him office?
I think he said he, he couldn't.
There he is.
Brian.
Oh, Brian. Okay.
We got five.
We got five.
What's going on there, Josh?
How are you?
Good, you?
All right, we have about, uh, one minute. And we are already live.
I don't have it.
Yeah, you do.
Of which? From the other night?
Yeah.
Oh, this here? That's just your journey, that's all I have.
Everybody ready?
Just have that.
Uh-oh. It, you have to let it go all the way down and then it'll go up. Yeah. At twice. You have to let it go all the way down and then as soon as it goes all the way down, then press it again. And it goes up.
I'll let you borrow this when I get done.
Okay. If it starts from your way.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna try to push it out. All right, then you press it again and it'll go up.
Some people might prefer that.
You got it?
Well...
Because you have to turn off the, uh...
I turned it off.
The, uh, stage projector.
...from Dr. Kramer. Treasure it at a different point in time. By the numbers, this particular project is a continuation of what has been a very, very successful project in Brook's Edge, or London Landing in Brook's Edge, which was really the third phase of that particular project that was approved some twenty years ago or about. On March seventeenth, I sold sixty-one developed lots to Arbor Homes, which I have Michael Marinelli with Arbor Homes here today. Of those sixty-one lots that I sold on March seventeenth, only seven are left. So that is a sign of a very, very successful project. If you look at and listen to, uh, the, the market, the consumers, the capitalist market, I think that's the best guess. The average sales price of those homes is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Very appreciable. By way of comparison, if you look at the last... ...sales price, meaning it's quality products that they're bringing to town. Furthermore, um, the income of these folks are all in the six, you know, I wouldn't say all, it averages in the nice six figures. Those data points are being used to share with you the financial impact it has for the city of London, for the city schools, and of course Madison County. Council recently passed a similar, uh, project for Polte. That particular project was nearly identical in terms of what was asked for by council and approved by planning and zoning. Polte Homes project, however, has greater density than we do. They have three point two-three acres per gross, you know, three point two-three gross, uh, lots per acre. We have two point seven gross lots per acre. We meet all of the criteria from a green space perspective. We'll be responsibly, uh, developing the property to make sure that we've got the right ingress and egress. Uh, we are going to make sure that, uh, we are, uh, you know, traffic is always a concern, right? You know, when, when you, when you get any development, you're gonna get some traffic with that. But one of the things that I would share with you is that, um, we're, we're prepared to put in a new connection to Highway fifty-six as a result of this next phase. And then take some time, um, for the, for the balance of the project and get, you know, even, and even further improvements on that property. Couple of other interesting things that, you know, come with the demographics of the people moving to our community. The majority of them, um, are coming from outside of London, which means our town is really growing, not moving from, you know, block A to block B. Twenty-six percent of these occupants are in the healthcare industry. Thirteen percent of these folks have an annual household income over a hundred and fifty thousand. And sixty-four percent of them have, well, twenty-four percent of them have kids pre-kindergarten. Forty percent have elementary age kids. So these are young families, is what I'm getting at. So sixty-four percent, uh, have young families, which I think is a sign of a vibrant community. And at the end of the day, uh, this is passed unanimously through planning and zoning and also through safety services. I suspect based on the success that Polte had with something more dense and, you know, similar in nature that we can get in support of council, I certainly ask and hope for that. I'd be happy to address any questions from council. But, uh, we're also grateful for the presence of a couple of other folks that are familiar with the project, Michael Marinelli with Arbor Homes, uh, who's actually doing the building. And of course, a face that many of us recognize, former congressman, current, uh, chairman of, or CEO of the Ohio Chamber of Commerce, who would like to share with you a little bit about the project and as it pertains to the greater overall economic good of our community in Ohio as a whole. So if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them from council. If not, I will refer to first Michael Marinelli and then former Congressman Stivers.
Mr. Gross, just a quick point of order on that. Polte's not yet been approved.
The zoning does not pass through?
Right, right, that's, that's been holding since last year because they need to make some, some changes.
So I'm sorry for that.
And then, um, you said the density, the density that you'll have is how many homes per acre?
Two points, uh, two point seven homes gross, not a gross basis.
Yours will be two point seven?
Yes, sir.
And theirs is two point three?
Three point two-three.
Three point two-three, thank you. I must add, three point two-three. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
What about, uh, is there any thoughts on connecting Kenny all the way through to fifty-six?
There are thoughts, none that I can speak for because that involves a lot of other stakeholders, but that discussion has come up quite frequently. And I think warrants conversation. And I think one of the reasons that you see the proposal in front of you limiting the project to sixty-six, you know, the PUDs owning for the entire property, but limiting the project to sixty-six additional lots is because we want more answers. We, you know, it is conditionally improved based on getting the traffic studying, that could better understand, um, those dynamics. So that is definitely one of the things at play, as well as some other ways to, you know, make our...
All right, any further questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, my name's Michael Marinelli with Arbor Homes and Division of Investment and Board of Representatives. You'll be okay. Thank you.
Yeah, my message, whoa, hello. Yeah, message is really pretty simple. I, I heard in the last, uh, the meeting that we had here two weeks ago, really the message centered around drainage and traffic. For us as a home builder, as we come to a market, we work with a developer and we work to make sure that when we build our product, that it, we do the best that we can to obviously meet the criteria that has been set forth. And then, you know, do, go above and beyond what, uh, is required in presenting a, a nice community. And, and we feel that, uh, what we, the success we've had so far, uh, it really, we, the product fits in nicely to what is here. Product fits in, boss, again. Our product fits in nicely to us here. And we're committed, uh, to be here for the long haul. Just a real quick minute about our company, uh, so that there's some perspective of us from a longevity standpoint. Arbor Homes has been in business for thirty years. We're out in Indianapolis. We're owned by Persha Hathaway. When we go into a community, our commitment, and again, all of our communities is to not only live up north, but with developers, a takedown schedule in our business there, to the community, to integrate, uh, our customers and integrate ourselves. So, uh, that's where we stand. And, uh, we're excited, holding the heart of this, we've had amazing success. We did that, that market niche that seems to say, keep doing it. And we'd love to be able to keep doing it and continue on in the next phases. So, then you call for giving us the opportunity. Thank you to City of London for being part of it. Everybody that I've been working with, Building Department, uh, the Burids Department, Inspections, Sewer and Water Team, everybody that I've worked with has been amazing. And I'm working to develop those relationships with folks within the community. You have to be someone that Arbor Homes has, has looked at to be a responsible, long-term builder. So, thank you.
All right, we have some technical difficulties with our battery, so you, if you go ahead, Mr. Stivers, please. Thank you.
I, I was pressed with a loud voice, what my, uh, daughter calls my army voice. It was great to see everybody again. It's great to be back in London. Last time I saw you, I think it was, uh, Fourth of July, right, right after I left as Congress, Congressman. And, uh, it's great to be back, uh, in town. And I've seen people fit in town a couple times, but haven't been to a council meeting. The reason I came today is I wanted to talk a little bit about big picture, about housing and stuff. So, I now am the CEO of the Ohio Chamber of Commerce. We've been around for a hundred and thirty years. Our mission to, is to aggressively champion free enterprise and economic growth for the benefit of all Ohioans. Uh, we live in an exciting time in Ohio, and the Ohio economy is growing. Between the Intel plant, the Honda Battery plant, and a bunch of other big announcements that we've seen over the last twelve months, uh, there have been over fifty thousand new jobs announced from big projects. And of course, a lot of small entrepreneurs creating jobs every day. So that's not meant to say that that's all the jobs. But in the Chamber of Commerce, didn't historically talk much about housing. But the number one thing we hear from our eight thousand members is about workforce. And, uh, we're starting to get people moving to Ohio and moving around Ohio a little bit. The good news in that is, that's a workforce opportunity for a lot of folks. Uh, as people move into homes in this proposed venue or some other one. They will be available for the local workforce. They'll be available for the industrial park in West Jeff. They'll be available here in London. They'll be available, uh, for the whole region. That's a big deal. Imagine the, um, the, uh, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Council says that by 2050, there'll be an extra million people in central Ohio. Some of those are gonna, you know, want Madison County and London to be their home. And I, Madison County and London are a great place to live. Why wouldn't they? It's safe, it's affordable, it's got a great quality of life. And so, the, the point I wanna make really is that if we're gonna grow our economy, we're gonna need people. And if we're gonna need people, they're gonna need a place to live. That doesn't mean there aren't legitimate questions to ask. But I will tell you, I tried to do some due diligence. I didn't just come up here to say I was for a project. I, uh, studied the plans and looked at them. I see a, a new egress to Route fifty-six that hopefully will take the traffic that way as opposed to through residential streets. It's laid out in a much more residential fashion. There's not one straight lane through this entire project. It sort of winds around. That'll slow down the traffic and keep people from speeding and going really fast. And I drove through the project tonight, phase one, that is already advancing myself, just to see the product. And I can say, I feel like Arbor Homes builds pretty quality stuff. And all the houses do not look alike. There's a bunch of different looks to them. And it looks like a great community. And it looks like a walkable community. And, uh, I asked about the price point. The price point is about ninety thousand dollars higher than the average home sale inside London. So it, it actually, um, provides homes that are gonna be, you know, good homes that are of higher quality and, and higher value. So, uh, I do think that, uh, I hope folks will approve this project. That doesn't mean there aren't requirements you need to ask or, or questions you need to ask about how it's done. But I, I can say, I feel like this, if phase one is any example of how phase two will look, uh, these are gonna be homes you'll be proud to have your constituents, uh, living in. And, um, it's gonna bring economic activity through people that will pay the income tax in London, but will hopefully work here and live here and volunteer here and thrive here. So, I, I know sometimes it's always challenging to approve housing because there's always folks that say, well, I don't want, I just built a house, but I, I wanna build the last house. I don't want anybody else to build a house after me. There's a NIMBYism factor sometimes. But, um, housing is getting to be the limiting growth factor in the Ohio economy. And so, I'm not saying you have to approve every housing project, but ones that meet the standards and are done right, I will, I would hope you to approve because that's what's gonna depend on growing the Ohio economy. And I don't wanna live in a state that's shrinking. I don't wanna live in communities that are shrinking. I understand, I'm not asking you to be Austin. By the way, Austin, uh, builds about five, had about five times the housing starts that central Ohio did last year. And, uh, Charlotte had about two times the housing starts that central Ohio did. And Indianapolis, just right next door, had one point five times the housing starts that central Ohio did. So, some of our neighbors are a little ahead of us on building places for people to live that makes it easy for them to live and then work there. So that, my whole point is around workforce and growing the Ohio economy. And I hope that you will, uh, you know, ask the questions you need to ask, but if it meets the standards, I hope you'll approve it because I really do wanna see the Ohio economy grow. My ten-year-old son Sam and thirteen-year-old daughter Sarah, when they graduate from high school and hopefully college, I want them to stay in Ohio, but they need to have jobs. And we need to make it a, a growing economy to do that. And right now, businesses need workers and that, and those workers need homes. So that's the whole point, uh, that I wanted to bring up today. I really appreciate you hearing me out and I look forward to seeing you again after this. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir, is your name Marinelli?
Marin Angeli.
Marin Angeli. So we didn't ask if anyone had questions before, and I actually do have a question.
Okay.
I don't know that, I don't know if he's the proper person to ask. Looking at what was handed out the other day, um, the cul-de-sac dimensions, and I see our fire chief's here, so I don't know if he wants to, he can pipe in. But it looks like there's only a forty-five-foot radius. Can we get a fire truck through there? Can we get a fire truck to turn around? I, I don't know if that's been discussed, or should we look at that any further moving forward?
So, we looked at...
If you could, if you could use the microphone, please. That way we can hear you on the live stream and recording. Thank you.
So when we looked at this originally, it was brought to my attention that there, they initially talked about narrower streets and the cul-de-sacs. So we brought that to their attention for the planning commission. As far as I know, that's been addressed and everything's been resolved with it. So, is that what, the way you believe it? Oh, you're not allowed to talk about it, I'm sorry. Okay. So, my understanding is it's been, it's been addressed. It came to me and we talked about it. We have, in our codified ordinances, pretty, pretty specific regulations for that stuff. So, we told them that's what needs to happen.
Okay.
So, anything else?
Well, but you think forty-five feet, that's curb to curb.
I, I'm not sure what the exact, I can't remember what the exact measurement is off the top of my head.
But we put cars there, you don't have thirty, you don't have forty-five feet.
You're, you're correct.
Yeah, so...
So I'd have to look at, see what our regulation is, and basically I'd have to look that up again. I don't, I didn't memorize it, sorry.
Well, I didn't expect you to. I just, I just seen that, it's a little bit of a concern because, you know, I don't, how long's your longest truck?
Fifty-three feet, total.
Okay. You're not getting that turned around in there.
No.
Okay.
And typically what happens when they, when developers come in and they do this, they have a, a mapping program and they have the trucks are, are certain sizes and they, they build that, the streets based on the width of trucks. If ladder truck is this long, that's what it takes. If it's a, a pumper, that's what it takes, so. They look at those types of things. There's a, I don't know, do you guys use the same modeling program that everybody else does, the engineering's, so?
So it sounds to me that if there are issues, they're gonna come up within the drawings and those adjustments will be made.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope, thanks.
Cool.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? All right, definitely like to, uh, thank Mr. Gross and Mr. Stivers, Mr. Stivers and Mr. Manginelli for, uh, for their time this evening to come out and to discuss this project. I've said, uh, before that London is going to grow. Uh, we can either be ready for the growth that's coming or we can, uh, react to it. But either way, it's coming. So, you know, this is just another testament to, um, the growth that's coming for London, and it's gonna be in housing. I think the industry is out in West Jeff and the industry's in other areas, but the housing, I think, is gonna be here in, uh, London. So there's gonna be lots of growth. And like you said, there's gonna be people for it, people against it. And, and they wanna, they want to be the last house built in that area. But if you, uh, stop or hamper growth in that area, then that's the end of the area. But I think that there's no way we could stop growth here in London. I think it's gonna, it's gonna happen no matter what. So, uh, good to see that this project is already, uh, getting off to a really good start and it's already been through the planning committee and everything. And thank you for bringing all the information that you have, uh, to us tonight. We really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. And now on to our audience concerns. We'll begin with, uh, Elizabeth Branson. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please. Thank you.
Elizabeth Branson, five hundred Graceland Avenue, London, Ohio. I've been examining what the meaning from the Bible of "love your neighbor as yourself" really means. Having lived isolated in a log cabin for twelve years, I was ready for modern conveniences and a friendly neighborhood. I found that on Graceland Avenue. People such as Rick and Rhonda. Rhonda called me, I, I drove through the neighborhood and I loved the neighborhood and I asked her if she would call me if a residence went up for sale, and she did. And I was able to purchase five hundred Graceland. And Rick and her have just, uh, helped me through so many things, always been there for me. Stan and Diane, my next-door neighbors, we just are there for each other. We support each other in, in every way we can. And then they, I looked out and during some snowstorms, and somebody was cleaning out my driveway with a toboggan on and, and all wrapped up and they cleaned it out and left, and I didn't even know who it was. I found out it was Curtis and Don. And, uh, wouldn't take any money and just several times cleaned out my driveway. And then there was Herb and Patty at the very end. Herb came down and trained me how to light my gas fireplace because I'd always burn wood. And so he had to help me with that. And Patty brought my puppies homemade dog treats for Christmas. And then Scott, next door to me, he has a great big, huge, old weeping willow tree. It's on his line and it's just beautiful. And he was gonna cut it down. And I said, oh no, please don't, I will pay to get it trimmed. And he said, I'll tell you what, I'll pay half. So we had, we have shared custody of a weeping willow tree that I'm permitted to sit under anytime I want to. That's the kind of neighborhood we have. But I also have experienced deception, lies, and greed. The proposed London PUD could destroy our neighborhood's quiet, safe, and peaceful atmosphere that we love. We have fought hard for the neighborhood and especially for the water and the flooding problem. This project could affect traffic, noise, and destroy our country views and beautiful farmland. I have observed the persons pushing this project live in gated homes, surrounded by land with no chance of being invaded by houses or businesses. Isn't that amazing? Unfortunately, not everyone here has the means or the finances to live that lifestyle. There's an old saying from way back that says, "Money talks and can buy anything." I would hope and pray this isn't the case with this situation. We, the people of the neighborhood, are going to fight and stand together against the invasion of powerful and rich individuals trying to change everything about our beautiful neighborhood. At my age of eighty-two, still in my right mind, I have nothing to lose but much to gain from my devoted neighbors. Matthew twenty-two thirty-seven through forty says, "Thou shalt love the Lord your God with all your mind. This is the great and first commandment, and the second is like unto it. Thou shalt love thy neighbor as yourself." If you don't believe in the Bible, then I guess you just keep using influence and riches to invade and conquer beautiful neighborhoods in the name of progress. I am convinced that phase three and four, and perhaps revisiting, I am concerned about phase three and four and perhaps revisiting the opening up of our dead-end street at that time. This needs to be addressed and settled now for our peace of mind and trust in the future. We also need proof that the drainage problem is cured and secure in our, into our neighborhood. I'm also requesting that we are offered our choice of a privacy fence or sound barrier, fence or mature trees to block the noise, dust, and lack of privacy to our residents. I certainly have not forgotten the suggested roads concerning... I certainly have not forgotten the suggested roads concerning Jacob's Lane. I truly know why they are fearful and concerned. You must certainly have justified reasons. If you, the council, pass this project without consideration for the traffic and safety and danger of the neighborhood, then I will suggest other actions be taken. This is not a threat, but my voicing of perhaps other options to solve a serious problem. I would hope and pray the council seriously considers all these concerns before passing this Phase 2 project for financial benefits over and above all the negative dangers that involved in the name of progress. This is Branson, 500 Graceland Avenue.
Well, thank you, Ms. Branson, but, you know, one thing you did mention is you mentioned the neighborhood that you live in and that's fairly a new neighborhood. And I'm sure some of these same concerns came up when your neighborhood was built. People were probably concerned about traffic, they were probably concerned about who's gonna move in and, and the noise that's gonna be there. But fortunately, with, with that neighborhood being built, Jacob Lane and Thomas Lane, it has become a nice, beautiful neighborhood for you to live in and for you to enjoy, which is similar to what I'd expect that this new housing project coming in will, will be able to do too. Who, who's to say that it's gonna bring in some, you know, neighbors that you don't want, something like that? You never know, you know? But you can't just shut out progress and say, "This is London and this is us and this, it's gonna stay us." And it's good that you've made lots of friendly neighbors in the neighborhood that you do live in, but who's to say there's not lots of new neighbors and friends that you're, you're gonna meet that are gonna move into the new houses that are, that are gonna be situated around you there? But I do thank you for your comments. Next, to Jamie Teresa Tyson?
Question real quick.
Yes, you have a question? Yes.
Yeah, um, the other night at Safety Committee meeting, we talked about the advantage of PUD versus R1. And I think one of the advantages that you had mentioned was the tree line along Graceland, that that could be preserved by changing to a PUD, is that correct, or? And right now, I think Graceland dead ends into a retention pond on both ends.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Hitt. Graceland, right now, it, it, it's not, it's different. Ms. Branson lives separate from Jacob Lane and so forth, they're in the Graceland neighborhood. And when, in fact, the city went to solve the drainage issues that have been much complained about, and I would just remind council that just months ago, Ms. Branson was blaming my farm field for causing the flooding. And I said, "My farm field was there and it hasn't been touched." And that was still her contention that that was causing the flooding that had not been anything but corn and beans. That said, I was a cooperative neighbor and said, "We'll grant an easement at no cost to the community to put, you know, drainage down that Mr. Long, Bill Long, was instrumental in." When they came out to put that drainage in the proposed easement area, it was learned that Ms. Branson's building is actually on my land. It is on my lot line and is not adhering to the 30-foot setback that is there. And Mr. Cavy's trees are all planted on my land and so, one...
Excuse me, it was not the building.
One, one of, one of the considerations with the PUD zoning was that we would make deeper lots to respect and preserve the tree line and the encroachment on my land that was there and be a harmonious neighbor from that standpoint. The neighbors in the Graceland and Marymount community had stressed that they didn't want traffic to come through their neighborhood. So, we made strenuous efforts to adjust that plan and make sure that traffic does not come through their neighborhood. Now, apparently, the contention is, even though we abided by and adhered to that, that they don't want neighbors anywhere, including those that don't connect with their neighborhood. So, at some point in time, you know, practical, reasonable approach needs to be, you know, taken a look at here. And, you know, this is, this is currently zoned residential, we're requesting it be zoned PUD so that those trees and so that the, the proper setbacks are in fact not, you know, needed to disrupt that neighborhood. And, and, you know, if you look at how Graceland was designed, it was in fact designed to connect with this property and we've made very responsible decisions to not connect at the request of most of the neighbors there and that, you know, that doesn't still seem to be enough.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we'll have Ja, Jamie Teresa Tyson?
I have a question, I wanted to be part of my question. I just wanna understand what the trees have to do with the setback. What you're saying?
The, the trees don't have anything to do with the setback, but the trees are planted on my ground and the setback issue is where her building sits right on the lot line, which is clear and, and unambiguous and it's a surveyed outcome that is unarguable.
I thought you said something about when you talked about the PUD and the residential stuff.
Right. But this is, this is not intended to be a public debate.
All right. So, you could come to the podium, please. Thank you. And then state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
My name is Jamie Teresa Tyson. My address is 2760 State Route 56 Southwest, London, Ohio. I would like to say something, first of all. People get very heated and upset at these things. One of, what I do is I travel around the world and help people resolve conflicts. So, I wanna say that whatever I say, I know how to distinguish between a person and what they do. You are not what you do. So, whatever I say, if I don't agree with you, that doesn't mean that I think you're a bad person. You can say, "I don't agree with you," and that's not, people take it personally. It doesn't mean that. And particularly in my case, I just wanna know, there are things that I disagree with, but I'm not saying that anybody is a bad person. I have the right to my opinion as long as I respect you as a human being, even if I disagree with your actions. So, what I would like to say, and I just found out about this meeting this afternoon and I had meetings this afternoon, so I didn't get to prepare like I would have if I'd known about it. I live in Brazil most of the year, but my family has been in this county for about 200 years. My great-great-grandfather was the sheriff and treasurer of Madison County in the 1880s and 1890s. I have a great-great-great-great-grandfather who, according to the 1888 version of Madison County history, spent time with the Indians, hunting and living with them before he settled out on the farm. So, I have roots in this county, even though I was raised in Columbus, Ohio, which when I was there, it was called Cowellumbus as a small child. And I know that's changing now, I realize growth is coming. But at what cost? We're talking about quantity, the quantity of people's incomes, how much a house costs, how many people will be living here. But I wanna know about the quality. The quality of life of people that come here and wanna live in this small community. I realize we have to grow, but to address this particular thing that you were talking about, you have to have developments. Unfortunately, nothing against you, sir, I just, I like trees. I told, at the last meeting, I love trees. We need trees, as farmers, we have to have trees. Trees attract rain. Trees take out the CO2. I know I sound like an old hippie, I'm not, I'm too young to be a hippie, believe it or not. But they are very important. I live in Brazil where they're cutting them down at a rapid pace. And I know what it does. I used to work in documentary filmmaking, I've been to the Amazon, I know what's happening. So, if there's a tree line and it can be saved, I would beg you, sir, to arrange your houses around. I know there's a couple of tree lines in the property that you're gonna be developing next. I was over there looking around the other day after the, the meeting that we had last week. And I just think that, my question to London Planning, or sorry, the London City Council, do you have a comprehensive green plan? I know Austin from 30 years ago. Austin today is not, I mean, it's, do we wanna be, do you want an Austin? Or I don't remember the other cities that were mentioned. But I don't have grandkids, but I think a lot of people will have them. And there's not gonna be, if, you're talking about, excuse me again, nothing personal, growing our economy, who's gonna grow our food? Who? If it all turns into housing developments, where is the food going to come from? You talk about, as I said, the quantity of people and the amount of money, what are they going to eat? If we develop all our farmland? And I realize London's a city, it's not the county, but you can have a comprehensive plan. And I would just encourage you, I'm not here half the year, but I will be affected by this project, the traffic, and I'm not emphasizing the traffic because I know there are other people who will do that. But I would like to know why it can't stay R1 instead of PUD? Is that PUD or what?
PUD.
It was zoned that for some reason. Somebody thought R1 is a good size for houses, it's a good size for the rain. Because you talk about, yeah, there's drainage, but again, when you cut down the trees and get rid of the green growth, rain stops. I don't want, I love Arizona to visit, but I don't wanna live there. And you could say, "Oh, that's not gonna happen, not in our lifetimes." But from what everything I've been reading and hearing, with, by the time the grandkids are there and go, at our age, things are gonna be bad. Very bad. So, I would just encourage you to please get some kind of green, and I mean a real green, not just a retention pond that is required to be there. And yes, you can add recreation to it, that's a good thing. But that's not why it's there, it's there because it's required to be there. I just, come, I just wanna live in a world where there's peace, where people that wanna live in a big city can live in it, people who wanna live in a small town can live in it. We're not about not letting other people in, but can they not be larger lots and can you not plan for green spaces? Make sure that you don't get rid of, I have 16 acres next to, you know about that, yes? That 16 acres that I have next to you, which is an organic farm. I've taken lots of our farmland, my family has several, and put it in conservation along waterways to protect the environment. And I would just ask, the final thing, which is personal to me, you are putting the townhouses, which will be along our property line, right? So, that's what I understand from this plan here.
Row houses.
What are they called?
Row houses.
Row houses, okay. But I would just ask, I understood when I went into zoning that that, right now, is zoned 25 feet back. I need a buffer there to continue to grow my organics. We have to have it before because of the farmer, because of his runoff from, you know, petrochemicals and things. We need to continue to have that. And I went out and walked after the meeting last week. And some of those trees are big and they go out over and with only, they've requested 16 and a half feet. I'm afraid that's gonna cut into our thing and then it gets very complicated when you do organic. You have to take the first few rows out and sell them conventionally, then you have to wash out your equipment. It's, it's just very difficult. And as I said, we're trying to help the planet, making it organic. So, I would just really appreciate it if it could stay the 25 feet instead of the 16, 5 that they're asking for. And I would ask you, sir, if you would not, because some of the trees are right on the fence line, you can see the fence growing through it, and I would like to keep the trees. And again, I respect everyone here, everybody is just trying to get along, get their business done. I would just request that everybody does it with respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. On to, let's see, Rick Pennington. Please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
I'm Rick Pennington, I live at 406 Graceland Avenue. I know we're not gonna stop the housing. It's, it's gotta go, we understand that. Couple of things I do wanna make sure that does happen is when you guys, if you approve it, that we make sure that we put in all the requirements that the planning commission put in. I was at that meeting and I wanted to make sure that they get in there. And you guys know what they are, I don't need to, I don't need to repeat them. Okay? And I hear there's a rumor, possibility that Mr. Gross may be buying some property along the Bowlin Alley and tying it in there. I think it's a great ideal if that goes from 56 to Kenny Road. If you don't open up some way to get this neighborhood out of there, over to Kenny and then on to Walmart and Kroger's and all that, you're not gonna stop Jacob. Jacob's just, it's gonna be, might as well put a racetrack in there because that's what it's gonna be. You've already had a dog killed and let's hope a kid don't get hit because it just takes a split second and they don't watch for traffic. And then the next thing I wanna bring up is the other day, I received a text from the city telling me to restrict my water flow. Okay? Fantastic, I agree with that. That's fine, we've had almost 30 days of, of dry weather. Now, between the two or three, or you wanna say it, we are adding 200 or 523 homes in this town on this water system. Now, if we have 30 days of dry weather and we're already sending out notices to restrict your water, what's gonna happen when we put 500 homes on that water system and the sewer system? Has that even been addressed? Has that even been talked about? I haven't seen no new plans for anything. I know we have a water cup or a water plant that's not producing yet. We got a new water tower that's fine, it's full, Stan told me that it works fine. But if a water plant not, can't produce the water, it's coming from another source. It's not coming from that plant. And you guys know what it cost, I heard a number of $10 million several years ago, it cost and it's still not working. So, I think before we get too serious about approving anything, we need to look at the structure of the city, water, the sewer, you need to look at the fire department size. I know they get support from Summerford. Summerford's not gonna be able to do that much longer because they're not that big and they're growing. And another thing is the police department. Neighbor of mine called them the other night because we seen flashlights over in the new homes at night, about 10 o'clock at night. Don't know if they was, if they ever got there or not, nobody knows, to see if they checked it out. So, if you're missing anything over there, they were caught. But that's what we need to look at. You're adding a bunch of people, you're adding a bunch of homes. And as far as the storm drain goes, I, I will let the city know. We had two inches, two and three-eighths inches of rain the other day, the drains worked, but they didn't work correctly. They only worked because where the water ran into them at is where the inlet and the top sits on there. It eroded the ground all around it and run in that joint, instead of running in the top where it should. And that's because they are at grade. All them manlets are right at grade. If, if they're an inch below, I'd be surprised. Now, when we had the meeting at Christmas, I asked Mr. Gross and, and I think Pat, the mayor was there and a couple others, we talked about possibly putting a swell in to get them below grade and have the drain done. That would've helped. So, now we're, hopefully, it'll keep working that way until that plugs up. But, yeah, I know we're not gonna stop the houses. I, I understand that. But I just want you to think about, one, the requirements that are set upon him to get the final for the rest of it. I understand that don't affect the 66 lots. And two, we need to really look at the infrastructure of the city. We've already got flooding problems all over this city. So, I know Brookshire has some since the pond went in and I know you're addressing that. But let's just use some common sense here, guys. I mean, that's, that's all it is, common sense. We're not gonna stop the homes, we're not gonna stop the buildings, but we gotta get the, the utilities and everything to be able to handle those homes that we're at. 523 homes, that's a lot of bodies and that's a lot of homes. You know, that's, that's in between two divisions here and they're both gonna be going on about the same time. I know you haven't approved the other one completely yet, I know, but it's coming up. So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And next we have Stan Cavy.
I'm Harry, I, I sure hope you give me more than my actual five, five minutes because there are people on there and I only use my wife's five minutes. So, and several of your speakers down here took over 10 minutes, so hopefully. But quickly, I just wanna, my wife and I are not against Mr. Gross building houses back here. Yes, he was nice to put the sewer where it was and I appreciate that. Even though the city has destroyed most of my trees, they cut all the branches out about 10 feet high, so most of my, my spruce are, I think, are good, I don't know if they're gonna die or not. But anyway, we're not against development, we know it's gonna come. When we bought that, and by the way, our house, Mr. Comer was built in 1968, I don't even know if you were out of, light diapers or not when our house was built, or if you're even here.
Not here yet.
But that was, it was out in the middle of the, and, and out in the middle of the country. And real quickly, that, that whole subdivision, when, when the owner got through, he just walked, now he built it, they just walked away from it, said, "Here, it's your city." Gave all the, all, all the problems, all the drainage problems, all these years to the city. So, it wasn't the city's fault, they inherited. So it wasn't the city's fault. They inherited. And that's what happens with all these plants, plats. The cities go to inherit them. The builders are going to walk away, the developers are going to walk away, and it's yours. Okay, real quick. Back twenty-five, thirty years ago when Madison was built, and one of my neighbors was Al Shellhouse, they broke, they broke the floodplain when they built Madison. All the water used to go east. A lot of it comes now straight down, straight down south toward Graceland. He was an engineer. We proved that to the state. That's in the records. We proved that they broke the drainage, which is illegal, but the state says, hey, we're the state of Ohio. We can do it. So that's one thing I want to mention. About five years ago, I'm not sure who gave him permission, John Long, the farmer, went in and take, took a backhoe and dug out underneath the fence, pretty good distance, and let all that water rush through there down to Graceland now. Now, that happened, so ever since then, we've had some problems with that. When that water rushes through there underneath that fence and around there, we get, we've had a four or five inch rain. Billy Long went over and walked up there to see what was going on. It was coming through in such a bad current, it knocked him off his feet. I don't know if Mr. Gross or whoever devised these, these ponds, understand hundreds and thousands of gallons of water come through within a couple hours, draining about twenty acres. I mean, rushing there. They would totally overcome, in my opinion, and I've worked in that culture all my life. I've worked ponds. I've worked with drainage. I mean, I'm an appraiser. I've worked with, I've worked on drainage issues with courts. I feel that at least the first, one of those drains could be completely overcome with water from the, from the, so the retention pond is not going to even begin to hold water coming from the, and I don't know if anybody's addressed how many hundreds of gallons, gallons of water coming from there. So that's a big concern. We're not against development. I think it could develop. It's a beautiful place back there. So, but we have done it, we have to, look what we did. We put in a sewer. We've got it pretty well stopped now that we can handle what we have. We can't take a gallon more. The city administration, when we agreed to pay half, you sat there and listened to that, I think you did. We got the city, when we agreed to pay half of that sewer, they promised us that the only water that would go in that sewer is, is preventable was, was to help Graceland. No other development back there now would be dumping into that particular thing. And I understand, and maybe I am misformed here, but when these retention ponds down here on the far east end get filled with water, the plan is kind of, well, we don't have a big rain coming in. We're going to go ahead and dump them into Lake Graceland's water system, drainage system. I think that's what I heard the other day. But I don't know if there's ever, and then also from the east, where part of the sixty-six lots are being filled, is about eight to ten acres that comes and rushes down through there through the farmland. So where you see green up to the northeast corner there, there's going to be water rushing through those lots. Eventually, if they put in a cul-de-sac, there's going to be a hundred gallons, gallons of water rushing across all those, those people's lawns. They're across their sound foundations, across the street, unless something, you cannot block that water now. That's illegal. Once it's running like that, you cannot go ahead and block it. I mean, that's just water law. So alls we ask is, is that something is recognized for this drainage. And I don't understand why, my wife and I, and I'm not sure several people, don't understand why the planning commission said that after sixty-six lots, we're going to do a study for, for the traffic and we're going to do a drainage study. Isn't that getting the cart ahead of the course? Shouldn't that traffic study and drainage study be done before the building starts? I mean, it just makes sense to me. And that's not what they're going to do. They got all sixty-six large lots to be built. Then they're going to look at what the drainage, what that may do to our drainage and/or and to the traffic flow. There were at least twenty people from, I, I would say from Jacob Lane. Now, you ask me, I can ask any one of the council members if you want to respond. If you lived in this housing development and you're going to go to Kroger's and you're going to go to all the different Redstone restaurants and all the different things, are you going to go down to fifty-six and go around? No. Majority of that traffic from all these, the new ones going up and this other, they're going to go down Jacob Lane. In the morning going to work, there's going to be traffic backed up clean into these developments. Jacob Lane will be totally full. It has to happen. I mean, that, there's no, there's no configuration. Yeah, you can talk about going to over thirty-eight. I was on council when that was decided. The mayor wanted to do it. The school was absolutely, totally against it. They wanted no heavy thoroughfare right next to their school. So that why there isn't any, and that's what, that, that's why that decision was made back then. In fact, there's even a walking path, I think, where you wanted to put the road in. There's a walking path now that goes from the school down into the front end of, you know, that development. So I also, I don't want to mention, it's already been done. You know, people move in there knowing there's R-one zoning back there. And I don't mind R-two, R-three, but I don't understand why we go to a PUD, a PANUD. Because technically, I know Mr. Gross and, and you know, I, I, I hope to believe him that he said he's going to be all houses and this is his plan. But he could change his plan and put in condominiums. They could put apartment buildings and do anything in the PUD. Why not go the size of lots that he's looking to build and call it R-two, R-three, whatever it is? It doesn't make sense to me to go to P- we don't need to do that. Give him the size of lot he wants and, and, and under our present zoning piston. Why to go to UD in turn? Why go from the highest zoning to the very lowest zoning, because as far as restrictions? I just, you know, when we have R-two, R-three, R-four. And, you know, I, I, I just worry about the residents, you know, when they push, purchase homes behind us, you know, you know, we all knew it was going to be developed. I'd known for thirty-five years it's going to be developed. So it's not a deal. We just want to make sure our drainage is taking care of. The number of houses there, I, the majority of the water, I've always said for years and years, needs to go south. Not go down north, not to go north in retention ponds or whatever and eventually end up in our sewers. The majority of that thing somehow needs to be cut to storm sewers so we can go south and into the new drainage system they're putting across fifty-six. Please forgive me here. Yes, you know, as far as everybody talking about residential expansion, all the years, unless it's dramatically, drastically changed, residential housing doesn't provide a lot of income for the city. I think everyone sitting at that table knows that. It's not a big money producer. Time you do all your services, time you look at your water plant, time you look at your thing. And it doesn't produce that much money. I mean, and most of all, we have a tax system here. If you're already paying, if you're working at West Jefferson, if you're working Columbus, you're working in Hillier.
It's changed.
Yeah, is, don't they still get a, do they still get a tax break if they pay part of their taxes and the other, and the other?
No, that was taken away unfortunately.
Okay, that's a good thing. I didn't know that. But still, you know, I'll address water since I'm only three or four years past being chairman of the water. I know, I don't know what's happened, but the main, the main water that goes along fifty-six and comes out of town is very old, breaks quite often. And we're putting, I, I think some of this water that's already being used by the butcher bog and some of those back here, we're putting lots of drain on that particular water. I don't think they've ever dug it all up and put in an all-new main. I'm really concerned that whether we have the water mains to even handle that. And as far as, you know, the, the holding back your water and watching your water, which we do and I have been, but every pump, I am sure almost every pump could be running, was running at the old water plant during its dry areas. And if one or two of those went down, we would be critical. That old water plant is keeping both towers full. We have a new water plant that could have been running three or four years ago. Yes, it would have cost us extra for, I think, potassium pentagonate or whatever it is to run in it. But we had it all set up to run, but it was counted, decided by the, by the board and whoever not to do that at that time. That water plant can be running within six months easy. It's going to cost extra right now to treat the water. And I know that you're looking for different, to drill different areas. That's fine. But if we allow all these different homes and we get into a dry spell and one pump goes bad down there at your, at your old plant, we're going to be in a water crisis. And I can remember the day, and I know Pat can remember and some of you can remember, when our water tower got down to five, six feet. There was no, and we've done that with both, we got down as low as ten feet with both towers not too many years ago. And ten feet is not enough in those water towers for any kind of a backup. So I just want to say, we need to be concerned about it. The fact that, you know, so again, I'm not against development. You know, I'm, you know, I'm not against, Diane and I aren't either. I just want to know how many. And just for example, and I just want to understand, can, there is nine lots facing Mr., I see it. There's nine, my last point is there are nine lots facing Graceland Avenue facing Mr. Gross's thing. If he builds out what he had planning, which is okay, there'll be twenty-one lots behind us. So it's double the capacity. And also I ask is, let's, just look at it and, and, and make sure that once they get this done, the developer's going to leave, the builder's going to leave, and the city's going to be stuck with it. And if we start doing, I'm looking at Josh, Josh, I paid Josh in twenty-seven thousand dollars to do my basement one time. I'm looking at Mr. Eads.
His insurance paid for it.
He paid, he paid for it under insurance. So that's my point is, please, please make sure that the drainage, the traffic is correct. That's your responsibility, not just the rubber stamp with the, not what rubber stamp with the, you know, what the zoning board did. So thank you very much. Thank you for my extended time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right.
And Pat can't say a word, and that also makes me mad.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I address that for just a quick minute?
Yeah, we can. We have questions here from Mr. Eads.
Well, it's not, it's not a question and it's a shame that the mayor's not going to speak because of this right now, but there's a couple of things that, that have happened. Well, he could speak as the mayor about what's happened in the city. Maybe not specifically for that. But there have been a couple of things that have changed. Yes, our water plant still isn't producing water. They're working on that. I think their timeline was October, November, that time that they're hoping to get that done. Secondly, they are running a line very soon up North Main Street. They know that line needs worked. They know that they had some pressure problems. And third, in case you didn't know this, the city has run, or the county has a line there that we can tap into in two places, but one specifically out there. That if we have water problems, we can get water right now. I'm very thankful that we have another option to get water if we need to. Because you know, and I know, and probably everybody here, if the water plant on West High Street goes down tomorrow, we are in trouble. But now at least we have an option to get some water. I just want to address that so you know that there are some forethought on the water issue right now. But you've got valid points about most of the other things.
I must just add, if I walk through that county water plant with water as intended, you think our old plant down there is old. Walk through that, walk through the, walk through that, walk through that, walk through that, and look at it. It's much, much older and much more antique than our water plant is. Hopefully, place a guy that works properly too, but it's a very old plant also.
Thank you. Let's see here. We have, let's see here. Did you want to speak again or you just? Okay. Let's see here. We have Larry Gessel. State your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Good evening, Larry Gessel. I, I'm not sure that I was really needing to speak this evening. I'm here for the third reading on our one-hour.
Oh, okay, yeah, you signed up to read.
Yeah, so I, I don't really have anything to say.
Okay, thank you.
But however you guys vote, I appreciate your time and effort.
All right, thank you. That's all we have for our audience concerns. Onto our committee reports.
We've got a hand up. I don't know.
Okay, yes. Uh, yeah, come on up. And let's see here. What's your, your name?
Sean McSav. I took your time, I'm sorry.
And what's your address?
Uh, three twenty-five Thomas Lane.
Okay.
Uh, I'll just be brief. I mean, basically here the same things that Stan said. I live in Brookside Edge. Been there since oh eight. I'm on the HOA board back there, so everything that happens back there I deal with. I'm not stopping this. Look, y'all, you're going to approve the housing, so it is what it is. Our biggest concern in that neighborhood is flooding. That property back there where the houses are being built was a field. I get it. Okay? And there's a creek that runs in between Thomas and Jacob. When it rains really hard, that creek fills up. It overflows into my ponds. My ponds, they all go together. It washes my trail out. Since the houses have started being built, I thought it would get better. It's gotten a lot worse. Edison, this is not on Mr. Gross or the builders, but I know Edison went back there and cut a bunch of trees down. They did not clean up any of their trees. So therefore, when everything floods, it goes into my ponds, into that creek, which goes into my ponds, which gets stuck in my overflow valves, which I have to fish out. Which I never had that issue before until Edison cut the trees and didn't clean their stuff up. The traffic issue. Somebody mentioned it or everybody mentioned it. I mean, right now, Jacob Lane, yes, is going to be a racetrack. That's all I see. Somebody mentioned, I think Stan mentioned it. If I live back in this new neighborhood, I'm not going to fifty-six to go all the way around town to go to Kroger. What's the quickest way? Everybody wants to go the quickest way, right? You know, what's the quickest way? Go straight down Jacob. That's it. And I know the property on thirty-eight is not his property. I'm not sure who exactly owns that. I don't think all of it's the schools. Something's got to happen with that connection between thirty-eight into that neighborhood. Or Jacob Lane's just going, I mean, it's going to get worse. Like, someone mentioned there was a lady on Jacob Lane. Her dog did get killed. Hate to see an animal get killed, but thank God it was a, a dog instead of a human being. So that's basically all I have. Everything else, the water, I says an issue. I believe in this town. I was born and raised in this town and I know growth's happening, and I don't think there's anything wrong with growth. But there's better ways to do it. We keep talking about a traffic study. When do we do that traffic study? Do we do it now? Because if we do it now compared to when the kids are in school, it's going to be completely different. So I don't know how long a traffic study goes or how it actually works. I'm not an engineer of any sort, so not sure how that works, but the, the traffic is, trust me, from everybody on Jacob, that is the biggest issue is the traffic. I don't know what the solution is. To get a, to get a road to thirty-eight's the solution, but I don't know. That's got a lot of other people than probably just everybody in this room, so. Traffic and the flooding, that's our biggest issues right now in that neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the board.
Uh, if you use the microphone, please.
Just, just a quick question. I'll let you guys answer. Stan might be able to. Whenever, I know the schools were built and the school doesn't want Kenny Road tied in. I understand that. But is there not an easement or a right-of-way for Kenny Road already established? Just because the school don't want it, don't mean it can't happen. Just like Mr. Gross said, Elizabeth don't want houses behind her. Sometimes you get what you want, sometimes you don't. I understand the traffic issue on Kenny Road not being heavy. Don't have to be semis going through there, just cars. And to me, that's the best possibility for him and the best possibility for the city. And if that right-of-way is already there, let's force it. Let's use it. I mean, somebody needs to look into that. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have to double check, but I'm pretty sure there is.
There is a right-of-way through there.
Yeah. So why not, why not force it or push it? I mean, yeah, you're going to make somebody at the school mad, okay? I know somebody in this room that does pretty good at that anywhere.
That's why there's twenty miles per hour zone.
Yeah, there's twenty miles an hour in there.
Right. So, I mean, that's, that's a thought to help him.
The only thing I'll add from past council when that was built, I do remember the two options, the one that was underneath the power line, that would dump out right where the high school kids and all those kids come out. They were both dumped out together at thirty-eight. Second one would dump right out with, pretty close right where all the elementary kids come, dump out there on the thirty-eight. So all that traffic, whenever it would be, would be coming in right when the kids are getting out of school. That's why it was turned down. We didn't like the way it dumped out. But the initial easement was underneath the power line, which if you go back and look at it, that would dump right out just dead even almost where the high school, where the high school comes out. That just doesn't make sense. The other route would be pretty much just, even like it is now, the middle school road that goes back there, that's pretty much where you'd have to go. So if you can, if you understand why, you can understand why the school doesn't say so. And I do want to address just real quickly what Mr., you know, what about our Chamber of Commerce. Sir, we have behind Josh's house over two hundred acres of land that's some pretty close residential that could all be developed and doesn't, we don't, we're not lacking residential land to develop with the proper utilities. We've got two hundred acres back there behind Josh that's just sitting there waiting to be developed. So I just want to let me share, people, we don't have to cram it all into one development. Thank you. So I just want to let you know, people, we don't have to cram it all into one development. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure at some point, a developer may look at that to build as well.
I sure hope so, because that's, it is, it's a good land back here in Billings.
There's plenty of land in London that can be built upon it, so.
I did praise this in line, whatever, back there, once I ran in there, so I could land back.
Alright, Mr. Hayes?
Yeah. Chief, when we talked to you last night, you told me that there's plans possibly for a fire department, or for a fire station right beside the dog park?
So initially, when they did that, personally, they did a land swap for this facility and the acreage that the city owned out there. When they did that, that was initially set up to do a future fire station in that area.
How much time would it save if Kenny Boulevard was put in all the way through to Jacob Lane versus going clear out and around and down and up? How many minutes are we talking? Five, six?
Probably.
Somebody's life. Okay, if somebody's house burning down, sooner you're there.
You would go to, you would go to Garfield and then come across.
Yeah. The fair's going on at that particular time?
Can you, can you throw any more challenges at me?
Well, I'm just looking.
I mean, is a truck gonna break down too? I mean, flat tires, or?
Alright.
Yeah.
No, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, there's all things, there's all kinds of possibilities that things could happen, so.
So we need that road through there.
I, 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 that's what I think so.
I think so too.
My question would be, how come the city doesn't finish that road through there?
They don't, they don't own the property.
What's that?
City doesn't own the property.
So you're saying that whoever builds on that property, it'd probably be good to have that go through? Is that what you're saying?
Say that again.
So you're saying whoever has that property, you should basically force them to finish that road through there?
No, I'm not saying that.
No, that's what I'm asking, it's a question.
No, I, I think that that's something that needs to be addressed at some point in time, and somebody needs to extend the road. Whether that's the developer, whether that's the city, or whether that's the school, or whoever.
Alright, alright. I just wanted to make sure, because I, I didn't know what you were saying there, it sounded like.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying that.
Force somebody to-
No, 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 not at all.
To build this road and finish this road through here. That's what I was hearing, so, wanted to make sure I heard that correctly. Thanks for clearing that up.
Anything else?
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Gross is, it looks like he's about to leave, but this brings up your point that you said that the school was ecstatic about this. They're, they're thrilled with this. I just wonder if that can be facilitated to take that on through there.
Councilman Eads, it's interesting that you asked that. I met with the superintendent and the treasurer today, and they said, contrary to all the representations that you've heard here about what the school's position is, that that's the, that's, these people's opinions, that's not necessarily the school's view. The schools got very distinct ideas as to how they could build a community center that could be jointly operated between the schools and the city, which is something that's been on the horizon that would serve this, this particular neighborhood well. The schools, uh, very specifically told me that they, they understand the risks of bringing that traffic through, but they also understand the problems they have by having it dead-end the way it does today. And, uh, Dr. Kramer said that he, in fact, is not opposed to having the discussion about bringing that in. So I think we're, we're wrestling a false tiger, which often happens in these types of, um, settings when people are speaking for other people rather than letting just the facts come forward. So I think it's very reasonable, um, that that is a discussion that happens, and, uh, you, you, I would be surprised, after my discussion with the school superintendent today, to hear that they're opposed to it. They would probably want to work collaboratively with the council and say, how do we do this safely and responsibly? How do we make sure that we restrict truck, truck traffic, as been mentioned? How do we keep the speed zones to a school zone level while schools in? Because there are kids out there running around, so you might not do it just at pickup and drop-off time, but maybe perhaps throughout the day, so on and so forth. So, you know, I, I think it's a worthy discussion to have in the greater context of this. I don't know that, you know, it's been, it's been proposed, you know, since your dad was mayor, long, long time ago, right? And I don't know that it has to happen in the next three months, but I, I, I imagine it's a discussion that probably is opportune for having as we look at this. And I think that was one of the reasons that, uh, this particular plan was adopted by planning and zoning the way it was, restricting these lots to just sixty-six instead of the entire development. I think that that was also a part of what was, uh, you know, part of the conversation, um, in terms of, you know, looking at, you know, limiting this next phase so that we could have some time to do, uh, the rest of this. I think once you stifle the next phase, you kill the whole project, and I don't think that that's in anyone's interest. Lots of people have talked about, you know, needing to improve the water and sewer. I heard that, you know, from just about everybody that spoke here. Guess what? This project brings two million dollars to the Board of Public Utilities. Why aren't we doing more with water and sewer? Because it's got restores limitations. So you can hate the benefit that comes along with growth and development, and you can talk about it in evil terms, and you can incite the Bible, but at the end of the day, whiskey, uh, uh, talk is cheap, and it takes money to buy whiskey, and it, and, and what I would tell you, two million dollars to the Board of Public Utilities will go a long way to solving these deep infrastructural problems well beyond this particular development, right? Like, that is, uh, a big part of it. But I can tell you, Ed, as, on a firsthand basis, Dr. Kramer told me this morning that he is absolutely not opposed to having the discussion of moving Kenny Boulevard through.
Okay, let me ask a further question, because I don't know, and as a landowner, you probably do know, from thirty-eight where the school sits to where Thomas Lane, Jacob Lane, your development is, who owns the land? Do you know?
So the land is owned by the school. Uh, uh, I, I want to understand the question. May, maybe re-ask the question so I can understand specifically.
So from point A to point B? From point A at thirty-eight, beside the school?
From, from thirty-eight to fifty-six.
Yes.
I believe it's held by two different landowners, perhaps three, okay?
Okay.
Landowner one would be the city schools.
Okay.
Okay. The city may still own, I, I don't know enough about the fire station and the proposed. Oh, okay. So, so the, the city schools, GC Squared, and probably Brooks Edge, a homeowners association, are all owners in that particular project.
So you're with GC Squared?
I am.
And Brooks Edge is here, and they, they would love to see that road go through, and if the only drawback's the school, it sounds like this could be worked out, hopefully, in the future, and makes everybody happy that the traffic can get out of there.
I, I believe it could be. I think it would be, you know, we'd have to be solution-oriented rather than problem-oriented to get that done, and I think that's very achievable.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for all your, uh, input this evening, Mr. Gross. Thank you for being here, and the clarification, especially with the schools, in regards to Kenny Boulevard. That's very helpful. Thank you. Alright. Onto our committee reports. We'll begin with Mr. Eads.
Oh, where do we start? I was in two committees. So Josh, which one do you want?
Finance problem.
Well, we, 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 we have finance, and we-
Public service.
In public service? You're gonna do public service?
No.
I'll do public service? Because I have notes on that one. Okay, I'll do public service. Let me, let me pull that up. Um, we did have some information here. Let me see if I can find it quickly. There we go. Uh, I'll just give everybody the highlights of this. Public Service did meet. If you don't know, Public Service, uh, handles, uh, the, uh, rec department and the street department are the two things that report there. So, looking at the, the rec department, a couple of things to, to bring up. The municipal pool has opened, has generated, let me see if I can get that to do that right. It has generated nineteen thousand dollars in sale, which includes the seasonal, uh, season passes and punch cards. This is forty-three percent of what they expected for the year. They have five new lifeguards were hired. They'd select two or three more. The pool is available for rental, after-hours rental. Uh, three hundred and fifty dollars for residents, four hundred dollars for non-residents. Last year, that seemed to be very popular, if people wanted to have after-hour pool parties. Uh, spring volleyball is completed. They actually netted a profit of over eight thousand dollars. Field two at Merrimack is ready, uh, and available, can be rented at fifteen dollars an hour or a hundred dollars for ten hours. Field one at Merrimack has not been done yet. However, here was the issue that, I'm glad so many people are here. Here's the issue. There's been quite a bit of vandalism at both Merrimack and Cowling in recent weeks, which includes graffiti, a water fountain was pulled out of the ground, and fecal matter was spread on playground equipment and other places. So this came up, and I asked during the meeting and after the meeting if there was any way that we could hire a rec assistant, maybe to go down there, or maybe somebody wants to volunteer to go down and read your book during the day, and if you see it, make the phone call, because we don't have the staff to do that, but somebody needs to be down there if things are happening. So that was, that was the, uh, the rec department. Uh, we did mention the fact that there was, uh, there was also the storage shed at Merrimack was broken into, which used to be the little concession stand between, over by field two. It was broken into, and not only did they break in, they took the softballs out of there, had batting practice, and left them on the field. So that was, that was kind of a point that we discussed there. So that's the, uh, the rec department, the street department. Uh, there's a couple of things. He did support a three-page report, which we have. Um, however, the things I'd like to, to bring up. The crosswalk equipment is in. We have a number of crosswalks that are gonna have new push buttons, get across the, get across the street. At second and fourth, the brackets were wrong to put in the overhead arms. They had to reorder those at, uh, Union and High, and Oak and High very specifically. They should be getting those worked on very soon. Um, they did a, uh, and I didn't get who they met with, but they were, street department was working on what's called I and I, which I believe Stan would know, is I think is influx and infiltration. When you have water coming into your storm sewer that shouldn't be there, could be sewer, where it crossed over. They're doing some research, they're running cameras, trying to find that now. Uh, bucket trucks back in service. They said the storm sewer on Graceland's been finished, so I'm-
This is due year before. It is in. They have to come back and do some grade work.
Yeah, they have to do some grade work. Have to get that done, and the water's not good. Some of the sewers are sitting that hard, that high over the grave. So the water now just would go around them when we have a big rain. You know, we had a, we had a drought going, so three inches of rain just like, you know, very little rain. We didn't have a drop of rain in the streets, so, I mean, it was, it just all got soaked up, so we, this was no test. Um, but they need to get the grade up so it's, so it can go down and flow into the sewers. And that has to be done, or else, you know, the sewers are gonna be pretty much useless in a couple of different places. Well, they can grade it, too, you know, they can grade that land up right up to the top of the sewer.
Alright, thanks, thank you.
So, that, that's pretty much that report from the service committee.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Yeah, we had finance meeting on the fifth of June, um, and we'll be discussing those in tonight's legislation.
Okay. Mr. Hayes?
Okay, I've got, uh, three different reports. Uh, has special meeting of Board of Public Utilities. Uh, was called, the meeting was called to order. Uh, minutes were taken. Uh, minutes were approved from the last, uh, BPU meeting. Um, Mr. Vess motioned to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel, seconded. Uh, motion was carried. Uh, they came out of executive session and back into regular session. Uh, water conserve, water conservation. Uh, Mr. Castle, Safety Service Director, brought up, uh, with citizens watering their yards, gardens, and filling swimming pools. While we are experiencing a mild drought, we are struggling to maintain our water tower levels. Uh, Mr. Long, I'd like to utilize our public notification to ask residents to conserve water. Uh, Mrs. Benedict, uh, did send that notification out, as well as put on the city social media page. Uh, that was a voluntary conservation. Okay, on June fourth, they had another special meeting of BPU. Um, they went into executive session, um, came out of executive session. Uh, Mr. Long interviewed three people for the lead water operator. Uh, recommendation that Brian Solars be promoted to lead operator. Uh, Mr. Lallonic motioned to promote Brian Sellers to water lead operator. Step B with an additional fifty cents for his water license. Uh, it was second. The motion was carried. Uh, Mr. Long informed the board that Todd Messenger will return to work on July fourth. Uh, Mr. Vess motioned to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel. Uh, they came out of executive session and back into a regular session, and then they adjourned. Okay, on six thirteen, uh, we had public safety committee meeting. Uh, everybody was present. Approval of the minutes from the five, uh, May ninth meeting was taken. Motion was passed. Um, we got right into what we've talked about tonight, uh, with Mr. Gross. Uh, and I'm gonna read most of this so you all know what's going on. There's been some distort, distortions about it, so I'm gonna read, it's gonna take a few minutes. At the last planning commission, they heard from Paul Gross with GC Squared LLC request to change the lot in question from R one to P U D. See resolution one eighty-two twenty-three and attachments for plots, graphs, studies, and description. Planning Commission approved the application for phase two with sixty-six, sixty-six lots. Uh, the applicant will be required to submit an updated traffic study. The ones submitted didn't support the amount of traffic this development will bring. Also, there is a concern for the egress and ingress of the development, which needs to be addressed. Uh, Commission feels having two entrances will be an issue. Lastly, they are requiring an engineered storm water analysis to be performed, and I'm gonna repeat that. Lastly, they are requiring an engineered storm water analysis to be performed. Mr. Gross will provide a presentation to council at six fifteen meeting. Uh, sold sixty-one lot, development phase three of Brooks Edge to Arbor Homes, all but seven have sold. Uh, he is attempting to purchase an area of land to have the ability to run traffic to State Route fifty-six. Uh, we did talk about a possible Kenny Boulevard extension. Uh, of course, it's depending on the schools. Uh, some of that's been answered tonight. I did ask Mr. Gross when these would be, when these homes would be built. Uh, his guess is the spring of next year. Uh, this year, the land's being developed and engineered. Mr. Hitt brought up, are there any green space concerns? Answer from Mr. Gross, we are two and a half to three acres more than required. Uh, there was a motion to send to council by Councilman Hitt, seconded by Councilman Stahl, and a vote was taken, and all three of us passed it to send it to council. Uh, Police Chief's report, Mr. Stahl will give that. Uh, Fire and EMS report, Mr. Hitt will give that. Uh, under new business, we had none. Under old business, we had none. Uh, we adjourned at five fifty-two PM. Next public safety committee meeting will be on July the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at five PM in our conference room, or possibly out here. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. Mr. Hitt?
Yeah, I attended the safety committee meeting this past Tuesday, and I'll give the report that the fire chief submitted for that, uh, committee meeting. As far as EMS training, they participated in, um, trainings at Madison Health. As far as the fire training, they had, it was related to aircraft res, aircraft rescue and firefighting training. They completed several CPR classes. They placed the new fire engine in service, but it still is waiting, um, additional mounting brackets. They participated in the Nazring Festival, rocking on the run, uh, end of the school year, events and parades, and events at Fairhaven Field Day. They hosted a second-grade tour and touch, uh, of fire truck. They completed ground ladder and aerial ladder testing. And some statistics he provided was that, as far as May transports, there was a hundred and thirty-two out of a hundred and seventy-five dispatched calls, which is a decrease of nine percent over his previous month. And call volume, EMS had a hundred and seventy-one out of two hundred and eleven dispatched calls. Fire had forty out of two hundred and eleven dispatched calls. And receiving hospitals, ninety-seven went to Madison Health. Twenty went to Doctors Hospital, two went to O S U. 20 went to Doctors Hospital, two went to OSU. Seven went to Mount Carmel in Grove City. And four went to Nationwide Children's Hospital, zero to Grant Medical Center, two to Riverside Methodist Hospital. And, um, also we talked about, uh, some of the legislation that we'll go over tonight. And the next safety meeting is July 11th at 5:00 PM in the meeting room next door.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stahl.
I'll give the Police Chief report, Chief Nickel. Uh, we are continuing our hiring process for open officer positions. Bryce Bennett resigned as an officer on June 2nd, and it's currently leaves three open positions to be filled. There is a delay procurement of the new Cruisers due to the equipment supply chain issues. Cruiser 15 was involved in a crash and is out of service pending repairs of approximately 10,000. We completed the Second Annual Safety Town Program for kindergarten students in collaboration with London Schools. We participated in the end of school activities, middle school clapout, color run, as well as LHS graduation parade. Also, the second grade field trip to various community locations recruiting LPD. We participated in the MCPH Click It or Ticket Seat Belt Awareness Campaign kickoff. We provided traffic control for Rockin' on the Run Five. LPD also hosted a four-hour CPT class on traffic enforcement and commercial MV laws. LPD also participated in the Light Ohio Blue Caravan in the Columbus area. LPD participated in the Madison County Local Emergency Response Full Scale Incident Exercise held in London on Cherry Street along with several other emergencies, emergency service organizations and agencies. Ohio Leeds conducted an audit of LPD's Leeds use of police policies and found no issues. LPD's approximately has 7,949 downloads. Notable incident on May 27th, officers responded to a well-being check on an individual. He was brandished, he brandished a handgun when an officer confronted him. Officer McCarty was able to disarm him and the male individual barricaded himself in the residence. The incident resulted in a standoff of a few hours. The FCSO SWAT eventually entered the residence to find the male deceased for an apparent self-inflicted gunshot. OSP troopers and MCSO assisted on scene and the incident, the incident was investigated by LPD along with Madison County Coroner's Office. Officer McCarty was issued a certificate of commemoration and Sergeant Harris, Officer Dylan Myers and dispatcher Megan Sharp were given letters of recognition for their performance and handling of the event, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, on to our official, uh, city official reports.
All right, so, good evening, thanks to everyone for coming out. Um, I just want to touch on a couple of things that was brought up. Um, the text message that was sent out as well as the Facebook post, um, was just asking people, we did not enact anything that said you had to do this, had to do that, it was just asking people. Because as we know, 30 days without rain or whatever it is, um, the, the aquifers start getting lower and we got to get that rain in. Um, so really, we were just trying to be proactive. We still were sitting at, I think on that day, we were sitting half full on each one, so really one full tower. But we knew if we didn't get that rain, and we know how meteorologists are, they're not always right. When they say we're going to get rain, we just wanted to be more proactive. As for the water plant itself, um, we are making great strides right now. And our hope is to, by the end of the year, have that plant up and running, um, to help produce. And then as Mr. Ead said, um, we do have a great relationship with the county and we do have emergency hookups, um, that are metered, so if something was to happen or we did drop too low or whatever, and especially until we can get the East, uh, plant finished, or fixed, I should say, um, we're able to hook into them and bring water in to make sure that we're taking care of our citizens. Um, so I, I just want to make kind of something clear when we're talking about these resolutions tonight. And, um, I am actually not allowed to speak, some of you know this, and it was talked about. I cannot speak negatively or positively on that project, um, that we are speaking about tonight, which is London Landing. Um, actually, at the Planning Commission meeting, I wasn't allowed to speak at all. Uh, wasn't allowed to vote, um, and that's due to my proximity of my residency. So I live within the 200 feet where you will get a, uh, public notice, so you're served with a public notice. Um, the law director at that point, when I was served with that public notice, said from here on, you cannot speak about it. Uh, you cannot vote on it, and, um, so I just wanted to kind of make that clear. Um, and I believe that maybe, uh, some people might ask, why am I not saying anything about it? So I just want to kind of make that clear. Um, and you guys know me, so three hours out of Planning Commission meeting and I wasn't allowed to say one word was very tough for me either way, so. Um, I do want to start off by addressing, there's been, I think this was talked about too, there's been some false statements that were made on Facebook, I usually don't do this and, but, but these were, were some false statements that were being made, um, and there's probably reasons why, but I, I want to clarify and clarify with the truth. So the first thing, and to preface this, I am allowed to talk about, right, things with the city and things that pertain to the project, but not specifically positively or negatively against the, or for the project. So this is about the London Landing project. So someone said that the phase of the project came to the, well, it did come to the Planning Commission on June 8th. And at that point, the Planning Commission did approve a modified plan to send the rezoning from an R1 to a PUD, which is in front of you tonight for a council vote. As we know, all legislation that comes to city council has to first go through a committee, per council rules. This legislation was taken to the Safety Service Committee meeting, as that's where the building and zoning is always discussed. The committee voted to send it to full city council, correct, with a 3-0 vote. They never quote unquote approved the rezoning plan, nor did they make any changes. I was at that ma, meeting, they didn't make any changes to the plan. All that committee did was vote to send it to the full city council, so I'll make that very clear. Um, it almo, it also went on to say that, that I was inviting people to the meeting and not inviting other people and inviting the landowner, I never had communication with the landowner about that. Um, that was not, Safety Service Committee meeting is a public meeting, but it is not a public hearing. Uh, so I just wanted to make that, that clear. Also, there was something talked about, about not giving public notice for the Special Board of Public Utilities meeting that was held at 3 o'clock on June 14th. Um, I have the print offs with me that we put it out on Facebook and the timestamp shows that the post was put out well before, 24 hours before that meeting. And that meeting, as you talked about, was held because we needed to hire a foreman slash lead operator for the water department. And as that was internal, the quicker we can get someone hired, the quicker we can start putting out the other positions so we're not shorthanded up there. That's all the business that was, as you discussed, was taken care of. So I know people can write anything they want on Facebook, boy, do I know better than anybody. People can write anything they want on Facebook. But when there was just a blatant lie, especially about the city and us not doing things legally, I wanted to make sure that I clarified that and addressed it with the truth. So I do have an update on the Pulte, as, as, if we're talking about housing, let's talk about housing. So update on the Pulte Housing Project. So they are moving forward and they've sent a description over detailing their minor changes. The Building Department, Law Director and Safety Service Director have agreed that the changes are minor and that city council can move forward with the process, um, where we currently are in that process. Pulte has expressed that they will send over their updated site plan. And, um, once they do that, I will send that all on to you guys. And then at that point, the legislation can be taken off the table, uh, on July, at the July 6th meeting and be voted on if you also desire, as that is your right. All right, let's get on to some fun stuff. So there's a lot going on around town and we have finalized that we are going to have two movies. Um, hosting the movies by Moonlight, our outdoor movie series, so the Super Mario Brothers movie will be on Friday, June 30th, and the Paw Patrol movie will be on August 18th. Both movies will be held on the Blacktop area at Cowling Park. It's free to everybody, it starts at dusk, come out. Um, if you haven't seen the Mario movie, it's a good movie, but if you're like me, you've seen it 100 times at your house already, so. But it's a great movie. The City Independence Day Celebration will begin on July 3rd with fireworks display. And the fireworks will go off at dusk from London High School, and then that'll be followed up by the Fourth of July Parade on Tuesday, July 4th. The parade will begin at 11:00 AM on Main Street by Park Avenue and travel down to First Street. So if you're interested to be in the parade, you can get information in the application on our Facebook page, on the city site, you can come into City Hall, we'll get you guys an application, the more the merrier. You guys know that's one of the biggest parades in the county, we usually have 40, 50, 60 entries, um, and always very well attended. The Friends of Madison County Parks and Trails will be having their ribbon cutting for their trailhead mural on Ju, June 30th at 11:00 AM, that's a Friday. So if you haven't been out there or haven't seen pictures of that mural, mural project, please check that out. They had, uh, painted multiple murals on the side of a building back there on the trailhead, that's right behind Eminem Diner, kinda. So, um, if you want to come out and support FMCPT's efforts, if you have time, I know they greatly appreciate it. I know John will probably talk about this in his roundtable, but we have the Strawberry Festival is quickly approaching. Um, and it'll be held actually a week from today, right?
Yes.
So a week from today, on Thursday, they open up for like dinner, like you open up at 4:00. And so it'll be that Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Um, so come out to the Strawberry Festival. Um, just a quick reminder that Monday is Juneteenth, and that is a holiday, um, for, for the city and federal holiday. So you guys might know the banks will be closed, City Hall will be closed. So if, th, this is a newer holiday for everybody, so if you have Monday trash pickup, please make sure to put it out on Wednesday. So your trash will not be picked up on Monday. Uh, once again, please remember to mow your lawns and your properties. I know the 30 days of drought really helped that process out for us, but we have been working hard to get notifications out to, uh, to the violators. So now on to the fun fact, which is number eight. Business View Magazine has reached out and they want to do an eight-page article on the city of London. So this publication highlights communities around the region and they want to do a feature on London, Ohio, in their August issue. So they have seen the great work that's being done by you guys and everyone else and, and, you know, the things in the pipeline, what's been going on, and they felt that this would be a great fit for their magazine. So they will be reaching out to some local businesses and local leaders to help be a part of that interview process, but I just thought it was a pretty cool thing that, um, you know, they wanted to do an article on us. So that's all I have, appreciate your guys' time.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. One, two, old business, ordinance 15122, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All right, clerk, please, uh, read the ordinance.
Ordinance 151 dash 22, sponsored by Greg Hayes, ordinance admitting official zoning.
Okay, as the mayor alluded to, uh, Pulte has moved and things are coming together. And this will probably stand, stay tabled until the July 6th council meeting. And then we will probably reintroduce it and move on with it.
Glad to hear they, uh, were able to make progress there.
Amen.
That's good to hear. All right, any other discussion, 115122? All right, on to ordinance 16723, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved, second.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yep.
We missed 135, yeah, 23.
Oh, because I wrote on top of it. So let's see here, for the sixth reading, uh, Resolution 13523, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved, second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 135 dash 23, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Yeah, this is for the, all the work being done at Merrimack Park and Park Avenue, uh, the ball fields, the improvements. Um, I think we're going to keep this one on until July 6th and we'll have. Yeah. No, but that's right.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, our thought was, just, you guys have showed that you guys are behind this project, right? So we were thinking, if you want, you can go ahead and file this down, and then if we need to come back for more money, we would come back for the appropriate amount. Because it's not going to be 49, remember?
Right.
It won't be that much, we were going to come back and amend it, but.
And this is because you've, uh, Parks and Rec's been able to do a lot of it themselves.
Internally, correct, with the street department and Parks and Rec.
Okay.
So, but we know that you guys would be willing to bring, if we said, hey, we need 10 grand or whatever, instead of the 49, and just make it cleaner and get it off your guys' reading.
Okay.
If you guys recall, there was two parts of this, and we passed it to the first part, and that's what the money they've been using. And since they've done it in-house, um, yeah, they might, might not need any of this, but we'll see. Um, so on Pat's recommendation, since he talked with Landon, um, let's see if we can go ahead and vote on, yeah, so, um, I move to adopt.
Second.
Second. First and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead?
No.
Councilman Peters?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Hitt?
No.
Councilman Stahl?
No.
I think that's the first time I've heard a few noes from these people. I wasn't sure they could.
Well, it's, it's a, it's all noes, uh, for less money possibly in the future, so that's, that's, that's positive.
And I will say, I, I appreciate the fact that we're taking that off the table. We should have done the same with Pulte a lo, a long time ago, I think, or, or tabled so we didn't have to read it every meeting for the last year. But, but I do appreciate that part, taking that off there, thank you.
Ordinance, on to, uh, our third reading, ordinance 16723, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved, second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 167 dash 23, sponsored by Josh Peters, an ordinance amending the policy and procedure manual.
This is just the much-needed updated that we need to do to our, uh, manual handbook.
So Mr. Mayor, are you done, I'm sorry?
Yep, yep.
So at the last meeting, Safety Service Director wanted us to hold off on this anyway, because there was one item, I think they were still trying to, uh, work out. Do we know if that's been changed, or should we leave this on until the Safety Service Director's here and we can determine that?
So we did have another internal meeting and it sounds like there's something they're still trying to work through. So I would ask that you just leave it on for a fourth, if, if you don't mind.
Definitely, we want to make sure that's all clear before we approve that. Okay, on to ordinance 17423, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Um, ordinance 174 dash 23, sponsored by Andrew Pitt, an ordinance amending section 1248 of the codified ordinances.
So this amendment involves a reduction of the minimum size requirement for garages from 640 square feet to 480 square feet. Um, that's just residential garages, I believe, is that correct, Mayor?
Hey, Greg, if you want to handle this one, but yeah, so, so they, um, a long time ago, they made the garages have to be pretty much a, I believe, a t, two and a half car garage. Um, so we've been getting a lot of zoning requests to like take it down to a two-car garage. So that was, the recommendation was to, uh, drop it to this size, which is four hu, about 480 square feet, which would be about a 24 by 20.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion, this is third reading for this?
Now, if somebody wants to have the two and a half car or three-car garage, they can, they're welcome to it. Okay, I just want to make that clear, so we don't get a lot of questions on that.
Yeah, they're just automatically allowed to make it smaller if they want, so they don't have to get those variances all the time.
Just the minimum size requirement.
Right.
Yeah. Of course, with PUDs and setbacks and such, then that could become a problem in a PUD that you don't have enough room.
Not necessarily, if they change their plans where it accommodates that.
Hmm, it's possible.
That's all they have to do, is just change their plans. They say, okay, this is the minimum it has to be, so now we have to change our, our plan and this is what it is now.
I mean, if they want a bigger garage. They, they can choose to have a bigger garage.
They can have a bigger garage, but it still has to fit within their plans and their guidelines. They still are, you know, they still have to adhere to all those guidelines and plans. They still are, you know, they still have to adhere to all those guidelines and plans. So I'm sure they'll make them fit the way that they're supposed to, they can't just, you know, change it and kind of do whatever they want to do, just because they want a larger garage, it still has to fit within the plan that's set forth. All right, so what are our plans here?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, we have a first and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right. One, two, ordinance 175-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 175-23, sponsored by John Stahl, an ordinance amending section 452 of the codified ordinances.
This is one, they wanted to sign one-hour parking from May to five, Monday to Friday on Union and Fourth.
And now I know that we did discuss that we didn't necessarily want to regulate parking in a residential area and then there was also a question about the property that has the business in it, that it was possibly not zoned for business? Is that what you said, it was zoned residence?
Mr. Gassell, would you like to come up?
And he needs a microphone, please. Our audio issues.
So Mr. Gassell, at the last meeting, you weren't here, so I couldn't ask the questions then, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Certainly.
So it appears on the auditor's website that this how, where your business is located is residential, it's not zoned commercial at all.
That would be my understanding, but I was told by the realtor that it's in the inclusion zone within two blocks of the courthouse, therefore suitable for commercial purposes. And it had been previously utilized as a commercial operation by Mr. Longard, an attorney.
So trying to establish that it's commercial, are you, do you know if, do you have occupancy permits for business?
I, no, I was not made aware of there being a need for that.
Okay. And then do you know if you pay commercial trash and water rates?
Don't know that either.
Okay. Well, those were the questions I have, because I think the discussion that happened last time was trying to create a parking area in a residential district, if we do it for one, we could, anybody could come and ask that we put one or two-hour parking in front of their houses at that point. I think that was, I think that was the big question. So did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Gassell?
I would definitely say you may want to check with building and zoning to make sure that since you do have a business there, that you want to, if there's any paperwork that you need to take care of, especially as far as occupancy and things like that, that you want to get that taken care of, because, you know, I know with myself...
Do I do that right here?
Yeah, I know with myself, with business...
Building and zoning right here?
Yeah, yeah, you need occupancy and the correct zoning, even if it was done previously, you know, that business is gone now, so you're new and you want to make sure that that is...
Sure, yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for, all right? So what are our wishes here, this is the third reading.
I think since we've got some, a lot of discrepancies here, I think probably we should...
So what's your motion to adopt?
Not to adopt.
No, to adopt.
To adopt.
All right, in a second?
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption, clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Stahl?
No.
Councilman Hitt?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Peters?
No.
Councilman Eads?
No.
One, two, ordinance 176-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 176-23, sponsored by John Stahl, an ordinance amending section 454 of the codified ordinances.
Just went along with the other one, it was a twenty-five-dollar fine if we had adopted the other one, so move to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
No.
Councilman Peters?
This, that's the...
It's the twenty-five-dollar fine.
That's the fine if that was approved.
If that was approved for this?
Right.
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Hitt?
No.
Councilman Stahl?
No.
Okay. On to ordinance 177-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Got wet my whistle for this one.
Yeah, this is...
Ordinance 177-23, sponsored by Josh Peters, an ordinance to increase municipal income tax by twenty-five-hundredths of one percent per annum for a continued period of time commencing January 1st, 2024, of which increase one-quarter of one percent per annum shall be used for the purposes of providing funds to pay cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, equipping, improving, maintaining and repairing municipal fire department facilities to pay general operating expenses of the fire department and to pay expenses and debt service charges for the debt incurred in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
So this is the, put the fire department on the levy again in November. It'll be the same, you know, quarter percent income tax that we're asking for.
Okay. And then you have anything further, any questions on 177-23?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So I asked Councilman Hayes, as the chairman of the Safety Committee, if he would be willing to have a discussion with the fire chief to see if a time limit, I suggest five-year time limit on this, if they thought that would be appropriate, if that could work. We know that it's going to take time for houses to be built, that it's going to take time for that money to catch up. What I proposed last meeting that I asked him to discuss was if we did a five-year time limit, if it hasn't caught up yet and we still need it, we can ask to go back to the voters and renew that because there's still a need, however, if there's no longer a need, we don't need to keep going on with that. And I would ask Councilman Hayes to give us his input or insight on that.
I talked with the chief and the chief is here tonight. The chief said that he would be okay with that five-year plan if we just taken care of, take a look at again in five years, if it's not needed and we're going full guns with housing and everything, then we could take it down.
So to review this again after five years, similar to what we did with other legislation?
It'll just be going up for five years and then, five years would just be renewal.
Renewal, mm-hmm.
Right.
And you just put it on and ask, have it to be looked at in five years instead of on for five years?
So every five years you'd have to put it up on the ballot?
Okay, so would you want to put it on the ballot or would you just want to review it?
Well, I don't, I don't think that you can just review it, I think when we set rates with the Board of Public Utilities, that was an option because that's not a votable issue that was here. I think that we would have to put it on the ballot for a time-specific time, starting January 1 of '24, ending on December 31st of what, '28, probably, it's actually '24, '25, '26, yeah, December 31st of '28. And at some point, looking at the finances of the fire department at that point and seeing where things are, you know, if we have to put it on, we can ask to have it renewed because we still have a need for that. Maybe the needs lessened at that point, I would hope, but we would still have the need for it, we can ask for it to be put back on and if it renews for five years, that gives us the point to get out after, at that point, right? At any point, you know, we have that five-year period that we can do that. I will say that Councilman Hayes told me before the meeting that he suggested seven years, my, not complaint, but my counterpoint to that was if you go seven years and another seven years, now you're fourteen years out, when I still think we're creating a permanent problem to a temporary, or a permanent solution to a temporary problem here, so...
And, you know, our discussion that we had earlier about the, you know, all the development, if we do have, you know, a lot of these projects coming to London, bringing new people into communities, building new communities, there may very well be a possibility in five years that we do not need this, bringing all the new homes, all the new income.
Yes, sir.
That would be very helpful.
One of the things that I was just thinking about as we started discussing this again, and I don't know that this has really been addressed yet, but if you're looking at this, typically when you run a levy, you have, you try to do it three times before or give yourself the opportunity for three times before it expires. So technically, I mean, you're looking at three and a half years or two and a half years on this, correct? So that's, that would be my concern, is we're coming back and asking to renew a year and a half before, so that way it gives us the cushion of, if we have to run it again, go back. So it might be better off to go with the seven. The choice is up to you. But I didn't even think about running levy or how long it would take to do the, or giving you that grace period.
And just as part of discussion, what I don't know is can you, can you create something for that long of a time period?
That I don't know. I know, I thought you guys were going to talk to the law director about it, or somebody was. I have not had that discussion with her.
I'm not sure at this point.
In regards to how long we could have a levy?
Can we put something on for five years, which I know we can in many places do that? Can we put it on for seven years, ten years? I mean, if you can set a time specific, what's that time? I don't know the answer to that yet. However, we still have time if we want to table this tonight and try to get the answer from the law director, this does not have to be to the Board of Elections before August 9th, so we have time to do this.
Okay. And that's a really good question, how long can we go on this to, you know, amend this to that time period?
You also have the other option of that, if you, if you do, if you vote on it as a permanent levy and at some point in time, you're like, okay, we're solvent now, we're okay, you can bring it off. You've done that with property taxes already, I don't know why you couldn't do that with a, with a income tax.
Did we do, I think a city council can choose to not collect a tax at some point, but with the property tax, that expired at that point and they just didn't renew it?
I'm not sure, how did that work? Do you remember?
Yeah, we just didn't renew it.
Which is a choice that can be made at that point.
Right. But then, of course, we would like to have it in writing as part of legislation of when this is going to end or renew, we'd like to have it included, so. We wouldn't want to just run it and then say, okay, if we don't need it, eventually we will, you know, take it off, but that would be for a future council who may not vote that way.
Right.
So we definitely want to make sure it's in the legislation, if that's what we want to happen in five or seven years, if possible.
Yeah.
All right. Any further questions for Chief Eads? All right, thank you. All right, so we want to leave this on, so we don't want to table it, we want to leave it on.
Yeah.
All right. Next, Resolution 178-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 178-23, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the municipal income, municipal income tax by twenty-five-hundredths of one percent per annum for continuing period of time as approved in ordinance 177-23 on the ballot at the election to be held on November 7th, 2023 and directing the Board of Elections of Madison County, Ohio to conduct such election and declaring an emergency.
Once we figure out 177-23, you know, then we can, we'll be able to vote on 178-23.
All right. Thank you. On to our new business, ordinance 179-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 179-23, sponsored by Josh Peters, an ordinance amending section 278 of the codified ordinances.
Yeah, I'm scrolling down to get to it. There we go.
All right, so this ordinance, you guys know if a department within the city needs to purchase something, anytime it's fifty thousand dollars or more, we have to come to you for that, correct? Well, for some reason in the past, BPU was set at twenty-five thousand dollars, so if we had to purchase something through water, sewers or sanitation, if it was over twenty-five thousand dollars, we had to come to you. Well, we all know what's happened with inflation lately, so it just seems with, like a lot of special meetings are being called because we have to get things to committee and we just wanted to line it up with what the rest of the departments within the city are doing and make it fifty thousand dollars, as the other departments are.
Mr. Mayor, when it was brought up at Finance to do this, I thought it was explained that the fifty thousand limitation for the other departments is for budgeted items? Is that true or not?
I don't know, I don't think, I apologize, I wasn't at Finance, I don't believe.
So that would, basically, anything that's budgeted for the year, anything under fifty thousand, they'll be able to purchase, just like, so if it's not in the budget, no matter what the cost is, it would then come to council.
Yeah, if we don't have the money in the budget, we can't purchase it anyway. So, so say for example, you know, we had to move money from lines, right? We would still have to come to you for that, this is just to purchase something.
Right, so if you have a, if you have a maintenance budget of a hundred thousand dollars and you have an item for thirty thousand, that can be done, it's already budgeted, another item for thirty thousand, that can be budgeted, however, if you have a hundred thousand and the item's fifty-five thousand, they would still have to come back.
Anything over fifty will have to come.
Right.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So we're just trying to line it up with the rest of the departments.
Thank you.
Any other questions for 179-23?
I would like to leave this on, just because this is the first time this is brought up, the public hasn't had a chance to see anything about this yet.
It's fine.
And I do agree. But also too, I do know that, like was alluded to earlier, things do cost quite a bit more, so it's really easy to get to fifty thousand dollars on things that did not used to hit fifty thousand dollars easy. All right, one, two, Resolution 180-23, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 180-23, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution authorizing auditor's warrant for payment.
Okay, so this was actually, I think designated to be my piece of legislation to bring up, so there was five thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and six cents. This is for a service from last year, the bill didn't get here in time, the money wasn't encumbered and so this is saying to the auditor, we agree for you to pay this. I want to address this for just a quick second, I think Mr. Cabbie or anybody that was here in the past, auditor's warrants payments used to happen all of the time. You'd spend half of your meeting saying, we should pay this bill because it didn't get paid. I do think that the procedures within the city and the budgetary process and then also the auditor's office, these things have been smoothed out. I think in the first, I've been here a year and a half, I think this is the first one I've seen, so I think this has been improved dramatically.
I think so too, I agree.
And really, the only reason this one happened was because of the change of the year, right? So from '22 to '23, that's why this one happened, because they sent an invoice late, right? But it was dated in '22, we put the rec in on 1/1/23 because we thought the invoice was going to come, and so it was the changing of the year that threw this one off, but you're absolutely correct, like kudos to the auditor's office. Because when I was on council, I'm telling you, you're absolutely right, half of our pieces of legislation were auditor's warrants and it was... Half of our piece of legislation were auditor's warrants and it was infuriating. So shout out to them because they're doing a wonderful job. But this is just one of those weird instances and it's mainly because of the changing of the year from twenty-two to twenty-three and a different budgeting year.
First of all, I like it when you say I'm right. Secondly, I agree, I think, I think that it's well deserved that they get credit. And I think the whole count, the whole city gets credit for this, so. If there's no other discussion, I move to suspend the rule so we can get these folks.
Second.
Second.
First and second for suspension, clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hay?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
First and second for adoption, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hay?
Yes.
Councilman Stoll?
Yes.
On to ordinance one eight-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one eighty-one dash twenty-three sponsored by Henry Comer and ordinance amending official zoning map.
Okay, and this is what we have discussed for quite a while this evening, was moving from an R1 to a PUD. Is there any other questions?
Jennifer has a note on here for a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, public hearing, this will be scheduled for a public hearing July twentieth. Is our second meeting in July. I think that is what that calculates out to, July twentieth. Today's fifteenth, so July twentieth will be that. So, you know, even though this was approved through the planning committee, we're still going to read this a couple more times here in council along with a public hearing. So, you know, we're not going to try to move anything through without getting things approved. And what we're approving here is that it would be moved from a R1 to a PUD. That's what we're approving, so we're not approving the additional street plans or requests or anything that go with that. That's what the planning commission does, but we just approve a R1 to a PUD. That's what we are here for. Any questions on that? Okay, on to resolution one eighty-two twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one eighty-two dash twenty-three sponsored by Henry Comer, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission.
Okay, and then this goes right along with that as well. And there will be a public hearing for this also on July twentieth. So we will have this read a couple more times and as well as a public hearing.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Madam clerk, you do such a good job putting these in so we know what's going on. I would actually like to see the first one, one eighty-one twenty-three, instead of just saying an ordinance amending official zoning. I would like to see that amending official zoning map, maybe for an area, whatever that is, from R1 to a PUD. So in future, we can find it when we need to. If, if the council president agrees to that.
Let's see here how it's already written. Well, I think in the, the past, I think the way it's written actually works pretty well. An ordinance amending official zoning map, one eight-one twenty-three, I think it's fine the way it is. Thank you. All right, on to roundtable, we'll begin with Mr. Eads.
Hey, I've taken notes.
All right.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking. I think you have some very valid points. I'm not part of the planning commission, I didn't go to the meeting. Really, the first time I seen a lot of this was when we received this Tuesday at four o'clock. That was the first time, pardon me. So it was the first time I had seen any of this was then. And I don't know what the process, quite honestly, is with the planning commission to go through and, and listen to your complaints. And whether you even had an opportunity to speak, I don't know. I hope that you did, I hope they listened to your complaints, but I do appreciate your coming to air your complaints tonight. There's two more meetings and then a public hearing after that. So I want to appreciate, I want to thank everybody for coming out. There's a few of I, I really like to talk to and maybe not even about this, so maybe so. I would also, I want to bring this up, I sent an email to the police chief. Something happened that I was actually glad to see happen and I'll explain. I was headed out Lafayette Street, right there where Richmond is, there's a crosswalk that is not, it's marked, there's a sign. You hardly ever see anybody cross there and if they are, they're, they're taking their life in their hands, I think. However, as I was heading out, there was a cruiser sitting there, stopped. Now, I couldn't figure out why and I was trying to think, well, what's this cruiser doing here? There's no lights, there's nothing. And, and I continued on and when I looked over, I seen there was a teenager trying to cross the street. They weren't in the street yet, but they wanted to cross the street. And the police officer, I think, did exactly the right thing in stopping. And had I noticed it, I should have stopped, you know, if he wanted to give me a ticket, I guess, I don't think he really could have, according to police chief. But I think it was the right thing to do. So I sent an email to the police chief and said, I think this is a great idea. It doesn't matter where we're going to put crosswalk signs, there's lots of places we're not going to put one. Probably the, the most dangerous place in London, if you ask me, is going to be kids trying to cross Main Street at Calan Park. Because it's six lanes wide there, semis blow through there, there's a crosswalk, but people don't think about that. So I suggested to him, when you see that, when your officer sees someone, I ask them to stop there, to turn their lights on. It'll make traffic stop even if they don't know why, long enough to get somebody across the street safely. So I, I thanked the, the officer for doing that and I asked them to continue to do that and I hope that they do. The mayor mentioned the movies at the park, it's next thing. There's also going to be three movies shown at the state theater this summer. I think they're on Saturday mornings, there's local businesses that pay for those and they are kids' movies. So I do know I seen an email or a message on that today. And I was also happy to see that we somehow worked it out. We did all of this back here, whether people liked it or not, it, it happened. And we had eighty percent of the sidewalk that was done. And we had twenty percent of the sidewalk that wasn't part of the initial tear down and that grant, that funding, I didn't think. And I questioned it and said, I don't think that we've addressed this yet. Now, whether or not that money was addressed or not, I don't know. But I'm glad to see they finished the rest of the sidewalk over there, right there where School Street comes out. And I want to thank the city and, and I think Baldwin and Son was there. But I just want to thank the people for getting that done because it looked a little funny to have almost all of that sidewalk done from that, that point on and not that little bit. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peters?
I want to thank everybody coming out tonight, appreciate all the comments and concerns. Yeah, I'll be anxious to see the traffic and drainage study. And I would love to see, you know, before this would pass, hopefully there's some way to connect thirty-eight fifty-six. So get rid of all that traffic. So that's all I have tonight, it's been a long night.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hayes?
I want to thank everybody for coming out, a lot of good and valuable information tonight. I thank you for standing up and talking. I want to thank all city employees for jobs well done. I want to thank my Lord and Savior for the rain that we so blessedly needed and He gave it to us. And He gave it to us just right. I just want to thank all city council members, I appreciate you, appreciate the job you do. I think things are moving along really good, got ways to go yet, but. I hope the water situation will be, I hope that tower and that water plant is operational by the end of the year. The gentleman tried to promise me October, so hopefully we'll make October, November. I just ask the Lord to bless our city, take care of our people, watch over us, watch over our country, keep us all safe and well. July the eleventh is public safety meeting, five P M. And I thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hay?
I'd like to thank everyone who's here, showing an interest in what's going on in council and providing input and things to think about as far as the various legislation that come, comes before council. So that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stoll?
I also like to thank everybody for the comments, a lot of things you brought up, we've discussed too as far as the connection. And I brought up about water and different things and it's being looked at. And, but thank you for bringing it up and mentioning it again. And also, today I was picking up lunch at Fat Daddy's, my wife and I, there's a whole bunch of bikes out. I stand in line behind one of the guys talking to him, just interested in where they was from. And there's a whole contingent of driving from Pedaling to Cincinnati to Cleveland on the rails of trails.
Wow.
And plus, I live by Eminem out there, restaurant, and it's amazing how many people stop there. So it's really a neat thing to have through town, all these people that come through and say how nice our town looks and different things like that. And it was just fascinating to me and I like to talk, so I got to talk to some of those people. And also, as the mayor said, next week's our forty-first strawberry festival. And bourbon chicken, strawberry shortcakes are going to be playing, we got two bourbon chickens units now. And for the parade, we got Festival Queens and a lot of shrine units, a lot of local units are invited. Anybody wants to come and practice out for the Fourth of July festival the next week. And I've been honored to be grand marshals, come out and I'll wave to you. And we also have about two hundred Cobra cars coming.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'm, uh, thank everyone for coming out this evening. I'm also glad to see that developers continue to be interested in the city of London. I think, and you know, and I know a lot of you feel also that London is a really beautiful place. And it can be even better and I'm really happy that developers are still interested in our city. And there's lots of big dollars that they're looking to put into our city and not just this developer, but other developers. We've got several housing development plans ahead of this even, and I'm sure we'll have even more later. And it's good to see Steve Stivers with the Ohio Chamber of Commerce, he's, he was in favor of the growth that's happening in our state. Good to see that he is behind the growth as well. And I wanted to ask the mayor, the police app, were we ever able to find out if the police app could handle what we were looking for with that new app that we, we approved? Did you find out anything about that? If they were able to, to add?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so just to let you know, so you, you guys did not approve like who we're going with, right? You guys just approved the money for it. So we wanted to make sure you guys asked us to do something, so we're doing our due diligence. So we've been having multiple meetings on this. The app can do both, right? Under one app, but then we would need to go with someone else for the website. The website itself. So we deal with. MuniLink, I think, Muni, Muni something, I think it's MuniLink, is who we deal with that does our one calls and stuff through the BPU. So we're in talks with them on how much that would cost. So if we piggybacked on to the police app and then did a website with them, who's already doing some stuff. It's really apples to apples price-wise. But now we're going through the fine items of what's the best user-friendly, what's the best direction to go. So there has not been a decision made on what we're going to do.
Okay.
But we, we have.
Have they discussed any like discounts since we're adding to the services or?
Amy, Amy was on the phone with him, doing the best she could. And like I said, it was, both of them are around. So if we did the app and the website through the police and then MuniLink, it would be like, you know, seven grand a year. If we did it through Aptigee, it'd be seven, around seven thousand. So it was very apples to apples price-wise. Now we just need to see what would be the most user-friendly for all the employees as well as the users, the end users. So the citizens, I should say.
Okay.
Okay.
Say, because that police app sounds like it's doing a really good job.
It is, they have nine thousand downloads is how many people have it, so.
And that could help to keep the city site consistent with police already and everything too.
Yep.
All right, and then also, I'm glad to see that the audio issues, have we gotten any emails or texts about the, the sound for the?
I did, it's all, it's all good.
It's all good.
Yep.
We, I, I talked with Rex and he took a look into the system and unfortunately, someone had gone into the system and somehow muted the live stream. So that's why we had no sound for the live stream for, for two meetings. And I'm not sure how that happened or, you know, but we, we had our live stream controls muted. So there was, and, and I'm glad they were able to find that out and to get that fixed for us because we definitely want everyone to know what's going on in the meetings.
Did, did you have one more thing, did you?
No, I was, I.
Oh, okay, I thought you were.
Chris, I.
Okay, no problem. All right, then a motion.